I'll call this meeting of the Putnam County Planning Commission to order. If you would, find your seat. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to please fill out a speaker's card. I believe they're in, are they in the rack at the back, Jenny? Or where are they? They're right there on the partition behind Ms. Kidd. So if you plan on speaking, please fill out a card so we'll have your name and address for the record. This is a public hearing. We're the Putnam County Planning Commission. We're the designated local planning agency for the county as described under Title 11, Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. And we function under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body, to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters relative to provisions of and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the Putnam County Land Development Code. The members of this committee will review each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at their regularly scheduled meeting scheduled for November 23rd, 2021. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will take comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. If you come up to speak, please direct all comments or statements to the commission and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the commission. The motion will be voted on by the commission members and become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make a final determination regarding the application. As a group, we ascribe to a code of conduct and code of ethics. As a member of the Putnam County Planning Commission, we pledge to come to meetings prepared for the items on the agenda, willing and ready to listen carefully, courteously, and to make informed decisions based on the facts presented and what we feel is the best interest of the people and businesses of Putnam County. We will refrain from unnecessary interruptions and will be appreciative of and respectful toward applicants, members of staff, and other members of the commission. We will support the decisions made by the majority and will be fair and objective in all that we do as a member of the Putnam County Planning Commission. At this point, I need to ask, does any member have a conflict of interest with either of the cases that are coming before us today? Has any member had ex parte communication with anyone connected to one of either of the cases coming before us today? Mr. Schwing?
No ma'am.
Mr. DeSantis? Ms. Fortner?
I have on the first case with, it was casual run into in the lobby over at planning with the agent and one of the owners.
Okay.
Prior to them submitting this application.
Okay. Do you think that your communication with them will affect your decision or your review of this case?
No.
Mr. Perry, do you have any other questions?
Um, no. Ms. Fortner, you weren't influenced in any way as a result of this communication?
No.
Do you have any interest, personal or business, in this matter?
No.
I'm satisfied, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Frolik?
No.
Mr. Dansler. At that, with that, I will call case number R-21-018. And, uh, Ms. Wendy has that.
This is an application for a rezoning for M.D. Smith &amp; Sons LLC. Billy Goss, BG RP Engineering Group is the agent. The zoning map amendment for two parcels from agriculture to residential, R-1. The property is located on the south side of East Penal Road at the corner of Penal Church Road in Placa. The property is designated urban reserve on the future land use map. The property contains 14.40 acres. There's approximately 547 feet of frontage on East Penal Road and 1,997 feet of frontage on Penal Church Road. The property does not contain areas of special flood hazard area, but there are jurisdictional wetlands and they are identified on the map that will be attached to this and it's in your report. The property contains a single-family dwelling and two detached sheds as per the property appraiser's information. This is the aerial of the property. The future land use. And the current zoning. The wetlands, as you can see, bisect the middle of the property. This is the proposed site plan. After the rezoning, this is step one in a process. There would have to be a subdivision, that would, type one subdivision, that would be coming through. And this is the proposal. This does not mean that this would be the final, but this is what they're proposing. And you will see within our comments and our conditions that we have placed on this, there are a maximum of lots, no matter what. They've also provided us with some architectural renderings of the property, of the future homes. They also gave us a narrative that basically outlined the size of the proposed homes and, um, the size that they are going to be, where R-1 is a 7,500 square foot lot. R-1 with these provisions within this rezoning will require a three-quarter acre lot each. That would equal 32,670 square feet. So that is substantially larger than your standard. The urban reserve category on the future land use map consists of areas close proximity to municipalities or adjacent designated urban service areas. Many of these areas have not been provided with full range of urban-type infrastructure. Full development in this category is expected to be at a lower density and intensity of the urban service designations. Residential development shall be allowed at a density of one dwelling unit per acre. An increase in density is allowed up to a maximum of four dwelling units per acre as determined by utilizing the point score criteria. The residential density will not exceed two dwelling units per acre without a community-scale potable water and sanitary sewer system consistent with the applicable state law. So these properties would not have that, so even at its maximum, at this point, without having that infrastructure available to them at any given time, two dwelling units would be the maximum based on the future land use classification with the point score system. The existing zoning is agriculture. The agriculture district is to implement agricultural one and two land use classifications as shown on the map. The categories in the, in the ag district are residential, single-family, agriculture general, and they also are allowed to have artificial ponds, five acres or less, livestock, a mobile home, or religious facilities under 10,000 square feet. The proposed, the residential R-1 zoning district is a residential district used primarily in the rural residential, rural center, urban service, and urban reserve land use classifications. The use is allowed within this district is the single-family home, except that allowed housing types shall be limited to site-built and modular detached single-family homes. Mobile homes are prohibited. And of course, community residential homes having six, six or less residents. This, uh, we, our conditions also have removed the opportunity for modular homes. The future land use designation is urban reserved. The proposed R-1 zoning is consistent with the future land use designation. The uses associated with the requested R-1 zoning district are allowed within urban reserve. The East Penal Road and Penal Church Road are Class 1 paved local roads with an adopted level of service of D. The development on this site will be served by well and septic permitted by the health department. The surrounding land uses consists chiefly of single-family residential uses on property-assigned agricultural zoning. Find, our findings and our recommendations. The staff finds that the proposed rezoning from ag to residential 1, as conditioned, is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan and will not adversely affect the orderly development of adjacent and surrounding properties. The applicant submitted application exhibits, including a conceptual plan, architectural renderings, and a narrative statement in support of this request, in which the applicant voluntarily proffers restrictions on the lot size, total number of lots, and type of housing to be constructed on the subject property in order to maintain compatibility with the proposed development with the character of the established surrounding residential areas. The staff recommends, recommendation was partly based on the restrictions to be placed on the proposed residential development of the property. So, our recommended, recommendation of approval is to request the amending map change with the, with the following conditions. Maximum number of lot, residential lots allowed for this development shall not exceed 15 lots. Compliance with this requirement shall be definitively demonstrated prior to preliminary plot approval. Number two, the minimum residential lot size shall not be less than three-quarter acre, which is 32,670 square feet. Compliance with this requirement shall be definitively demonstrated prior to preliminary plot approval. And all single-family residents constructed within the development shall consistent, be, shall be consistent solely of site, consist solely of site-built residences. Modular construction is prohibited. Compliance with this requirement shall be definite, definitely demonstrated at the time of the building permit, the middle.
If you have any questions, um... Danzler?
I don't know if my microphone's working or not. I have no light on it. Um, the question I have is, is what are the setbacks on the homes in that area? What, what would the setbacks be on each side and front and back?
Today or late?
Well, no.
With the R-1?
In the, in the R-1.
Okay, with R-1, it's 25, 10 on the sides, and 20 in the back. With the agriculture, which is as it sits today, it is 25 in the front, 10 on the sides, and 10 in the rear.
So the only change would be the back?
The back, the back setback would be the only other thing?
Yeah, the back setback would be increased. Correct. Okay, to give greater buffering.
Right, and the minimum size of a lot in an ag zoning district is one acre, 43,000, you know. So, that's the, a quarter acre is the reduction in size. In addition, um, the only other difference is, um, a lot width in an agricultural zoning district is 150 feet. These are a one, minimum of 100 feet.
Okay. Other questions of Ms. Hickey? Mr. Schwing, you have a question?
Yes ma'am. This diagram, which is the partial of your plot plan, or proposed plot plan, I can't make anything out in a legend or what this L. thing is.
What page is that, Mr. Schwing?
Well, it doesn't have a page number.
It's a retention pond.
That, that...
It's a retention pond?
I think that's what it is.
That is a retention pond.
It's a retention pond next to the lake?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schwing, the, your microphone, it's not catching your, your speech.
Okay.
The reten, what page were you referring to, Mr. Schwing?
Well, it's on a couple of different places, but it's, it's the, the lay of the 15 lots.
Yes, uh, so that, that L-shaped structure there is the retention area, but again, I stress that this is purely conceptual. That retention pond may not go there. Um, it'll go wherever Public Works determines it has to go and where their engineer would have to, uh, what would determine it, it can go. The, um, other water body that you see there is the creek that's dammed with an earthen dam that's been there for quite a long time.
Okay, so that's, that's a conceptual proposed, but there will be a retention pond on site?
Yes, ma'am. They'll be required to contain all of their stormwater runoff.
Within the subdivision.
Within the subdivision, correct.
But that has nothing to do with what we're doing today.
Correct.
What we're doing today is purely the rezoning.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, now with the subdivision, that is not going to come back to us. That goes through DRC, correct?
It will go through DRC, but the preliminary plat, so it'll go first through the Development Review Committee and then it'll come to the Planning Commission for the preliminary stage. The final plat is purely administrative and the final plat, though, has to match the preliminary plat. So, the preliminary plat is meant for the construction of the horizontal improvements like the drainage and roads or any, any other kind of, uh, excuse me, improvements that are necessary for the subdivision.
Okay, so all we're doing today is looking at rezoning from agriculture to R-1?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
I have another question.
Okay, that's fine.
You may not like that question. There's 15 lots and we have 14 acres, plus a little over 14 acres. We're proposing, I read in the verbiage, individual wells. And it didn't say individual septics, but I don't see nothing on here, a place to put them.
They haven't been approved yet because that 15 is the maximum. And once it goes through DRC, that 15 may be reduced. And at that time, the health department is also part of our Development Review Committee, so they would be putting in their comments and their, their requests.
So, again, this has nothing to do with the proposed construction of anything. This is only the rezoning. So, that information with the plats and with the, the design concepts, that was purely informational in our packet, has nothing to do with what we're doing today.
Well, it, it's nice to say that, but since it does not follow state law, I think it does, I mean...
You want to explain to us why it doesn't follow state law?
If I'm not mistaken, you have to have a minimum of one acre for a septic tank on any new subdivision.
Um, Madam Chair, if I may, I'm not sure what the state law says about that, but regardless, we are looking at a purely conceptual drawing here. So the maximum number of lots that there could be there is 15, but staff is anticipating fewer lots because of the site constraints. So, at the Development Review stage, they will, in all likelihood, be required to reduce the number of lots. They would have to comply with whatever environmental health requires at that time.
And again, that has nothing to do with what we're doing today. We're merely approving the change of zoning from ag to residential for the whole parcel. What happens with the subdivision? What happens with the distribution of parcels, the size of parcels? That all goes through the subdivision process, which comes later. Is that correct?
Well, the size of the parcels, they will be bound to the minimum that we are requiring.
So because they submitted a few documents as evidence as part of their rezoning request, those are documents that can be considered in the request, but you are right, Madam Chair, in saying that the only, we're not designing the subdivision here.
No.
We're placing, staff has recommended placing three conditions to ensure compatibility with the surrounding area. Uh, but aside from that, it would be purely the rezoning that, that's being judged here.
And the conditions that are placed on there will be taken forward into the subdivision process. Will not necessarily be maxed out. You know, the maximum number of parcels that we would allow under the rezoning would be 15. Now, whether the DRC and the subdivision process, when they met this through their process, allows for that, it may totally reduce the number of parcels available. You know, it could go back to one parcel per acre or look at all of the different variables with the land and with the topography of the land. There's a lot that's going to have to be happening, but that has nothing to do with what we're doing today. All we're doing today is saying, okay, we'll rezone this from ag to residential. And then the owner and their agents and their people need to go forward and pursue, or not pursue, a subdivision.
Correct.
What we do today is not approving a subdivision. Is that correct, Mr. Quintez?
Yep, sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other question to be asked? Do you have any other questions, Ken?
I guess as a developer, I look at things differently.
Well, you probably do. And we have to look at it today as a planning commission and...
We're only concerned, we have currently an ag, one per acre.
Mm-hmm.
And we want to go
Residential.
Less, less than one per acre.
Mm-hmm.
Knowing that we can't do that and give services to that one unit.
I think...
I mean, I mean, you don't under...
I do understand what you're saying, but what we're...
That's not relevant?
Well, it's relevant to the extent that down the road, they're going to have to comply and they're going to have to comply with the health department provisions for septic, onsite septic. They're going to have to reply, comply with everything. But based on the zoning regulations in the Land Development Code, this is what is available for that property in residential. This is the maximum that's available. This doesn't guarantee anything. It just says that the maximum number of residential lots allowed for that site based on the Land Development Code is 15. And what happens beyond this, there will be a much more strident review when it goes before DRC for subdivision.
If we...
Into the microphone, microphone.
If we go, we had this discussion on the future land use. With central water and sewer, you can increase the density, which is what we're trying to do here. This is an increase in density is what, and I'm always in favor of increasing density. But I'm not in favor of increasing density if it doesn't meet the state requirement. If they want one house per acre, period, regardless of what the zoning is, why would we make lots less than an acre where you couldn't use them?
I know...
I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Is that, is that in fact the case, Gabriel? Do we know this?
And...
I know that in our new comprehensive plan we just did, we said it has to be a half acre lot to have, unless it has, um...
So the...
Water or sewer.
We don't have water and sewer.
The current comprehensive...
I'm aware of that, excuse me.
Sorry. The current comprehensive plan permits a, an increase in density of up to two units per acre without water and sewer. That's the current comprehensive plan. The proposed comprehensive plan, um, maintains a similar requirement, but we're still under the, the current, so...
But our old plan is consistent with state law. We're not breaking state law.
Yes, yes, and, and regardless, the, the requirements of environmental health are not under the purview of Planning and Development Services. I don't know what their minimum acreage size is. I have actually not heard that they require a minimum of one acre for well and septic. But I know that there are distance requirements between the, the well and, uh, septic tanks, but I don't know of a, a minimum acreage requirement of one acre.
On any, on any new subdivision. Not if there's an existing subdivision or exist, existing parcel, but... Is that me? What am I doing wrong?
It's always you, Ken.
I understand. My wife says the same thing.
I, I believe it may be because you're facing that way. If you face toward the mic, it may stop doing that.
All right. If we have, we have a piece of property that it... We have one piece of property that's 14 and a half acres, approximately. Under our existing ordinance, we can subdivide that piece of property. How many, how many lots can you get out of it without doing a new subdivision?
Two.
Two. So, what we want to do is increase the density. The only way to do that is with a new subdivision.
Correct.
Okay.
Or a PUD.
Or a PUD. I'm not against increasing the density. I can't see us as a board knowing that we got to have an acre to get a septic tank.
It's not true.
It's not true?
What he just said is that you can get two houses per acre with a well and septic tank. That's just what he just said. I'm...
I, I know what he said.
The distance, the distances...
The law says...
The septics and the wells is critical. And that's going to be all up to the health department, so...
That's not going to be a, you can put, you can do, meet the distance requirement. The acreage requirement, that's the state law that you can't change.
Okay, our comprehensive plan, as it currently stands, allows two residential units per acre. That's what we have to judge this application against, is the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. Those have all been approved by the state of Florida.
We have one lot that is 14 acres.
Right.
So we can make two lots out of it.
Unless they go for a subdivision, which they intend to do down the road. That's not in our purview whatsoever. Let's move on from this and, does anyone else have heartburn over the fact that it's less than one unit per acre?
I don't, I don't...
Alls we're doing is, to me, is just rezoning
Right.
Ag 1 to R-1. That's all we're doing.
Correct.
If the man wants to put 20 houses in, he's got to figure that out. If he wants to put two houses in, he's got to figure that out. Alls we're doing is rezoning a piece of property.
We have...
That's if it has to go whatever he does. Am I correct?
Right, uh, it either goes for a, a lot split to be two parcels and that's what's allowed by the state, or it goes to a subdivision, which must meet these criteria at the least. Not meaning that it won't be required to be under these provisions once it goes through the Development Review Committee, which is what the DRC is. It's a, it's a committee of people that are put together from multiple agencies that review all subdivision requests in the county. And they make a recommendation then back to planning and zoning for planning and zoning to incorporate in whatever they bring back to us with a subdivision plat. Now, it's the health department, it's the St. John's Water Management District. It is, I believe it's Public Works. It's planning and zoning, and who else? Is it Gabriel?
Uh, Fire Department, Emergency Services... Fire Department, Emergency Services, and any other agencies that we have to bring in to inform-
It's a multi-agency review. And it's not a simple slam dunk process. These people spend time going over it, and they will come out with a recommendation that is binding. And once that recommendation comes out, that becomes the basis for the subdivision and the subdivision request, and they have to follow that. And once that comes back to us, and if it follows that, we have the opportunity to approve it. But until that process, whatever subdivision plans, whatever building proposals, whatever lot proposals, those are purely preliminary and ancillary to what we're doing. They have no, they're just kind of an appendix in our file. They have nothing to do with the rezoning request. So with that said, are there any other questions of staff? Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Gabriel. Is the owner or the owner's agent present? Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and-
I'm Billy Gauz with BG RP Engineering Group, PO Box 684, Crystal River, Florida, 34428. To answer Mr. Swing's question, Florida Administrative Code, Chapter 64E-6.001, and Florida State Statute 381.065, minimum lot size requirements for well and septic are a half acre. With a 75-foot setback, no more density than four lots per acre.
On new subdivisions?
On brand-new subdivisions.
Okay.
Or any lot for that matter, singular or subdivision.
What would you like to tell us about this proposal?
I think it's consistent with where Putnam County's trying to go. I think it's a good proposal for everybody in the community, and we appreciate your service and your support.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Gauz?
You're the engineer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The only, I mean, I've been aware of this situation with the dam, with the pipe.
Yes, sir.
How do you propose to address that?
That's not part of our design. The retention is going to handle, as Gabriel stated, 100% of our onsite runoff, which will ultimately discharge into that, and that's of no consequence to our design.
The dam's not going to be disturbed?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Staff made a comment.
And it'll be pre versus post. We won't discharge any more water than was there before.
That's what I was wondering.
Right. But you'll have to have the retention pump because of the impervious surface that would be constructed onsite.
Correct, and water treatment quality and things like that.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comments from staff? Any questions from staff from Mr. Gauz? I hope I've got your name right.
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Wendy, do you have some public comment cards?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak? We do need to have your green cards, so if you could bring them forward and give them to Ms. Win, Ms. Jenny Kidd? At this time, we will go to the public comments on our action today. Would ask you to come forward to the podium and speak directly to us, not to anyone in the audience, and also please state your name and your address, and we have three minutes allotted for each public speaker. First one to come forward would be Mr. Charles Smith. Please state your name and address.
I'm Charles Smith. I've lived in that community for sixty-odd years.
Your address, sir.
185 East Penn Isle Road is where the property I own is adjacent to that property, but I live the next road over on Horseman Club, 145, I mean, sorry, 530 Horseman Club is where I live. So anyway, that community's been my community for all my life, sixty-odd years. That property, in my opinion, is, is too valuable to the county to just sit there and, and just vegetate. It's going to be developed someday without, without our developing it. I believe that it's just too valuable to the taxpayers in Putnam County to just sit there and not have any houses on it to pay taxes. Our side of the road has paid the taxes on that side of the road for sixty-odd years. We've had use of that road, and the county spent no telling how many hundred thousand dollars fixing it up over sixty-odd years. And, but just my opinion, I'd like to see it go on with a possible development, with a possible rezoning. And I know I've got a lot of pushback from some people I know and neighbors with for sixty-odd years. I appreciate their concerns, but at the same time, they've had the privilege of using that road for these years, and they've had the privilege of using that property they own to develop, to whatever degree they've wanted to do for all these years. And, you know, I think it's, nobody in here wants to have anybody tell them how to do whatever with their property, including everybody in that panel there. But at the same time, we need to be aware that there needs to be an opportunity to develop Putnam County. There's not a better piece of land in Putnam County than that piece of land for Putnam County to develop. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Please state your name and address and tell us your thoughts.
My name is Gerald Cannon. I live 280 Penn Isle Church Road. I've lived there for 72 years, and I'm not in favor of this housing project at all. For one thing, the road is a descriptive right-of-way. My land runs across the road. Y'all know what a descriptive right-of-way is? That's what they call it. It, you know, we've, I own the road in front of my house and all the way down to the end. That's called a descriptive right-of-way. And, but the county's used it for years, and I didn't say nothing when they paved the road or deed it over to them or nothing, but I left it alone. But I'm not in favor of this. That dam is in bad shape, in my opinion. The road is in worse shape. The bridge at the road, it's an old culvert, and I was living there when the whole hurricane come through and took everything out, which was a wooden bridge. And that culvert's been there all these years, and it's washing out of the sides right now. When you go to pass somebody, you gotta let them just about get by you because you will, tar will go in a hole on the side. They've been out there and looked at it already, and they've patched it several terrible times. But on rezoning this land, why can't you go ag estate on it? Ag estate would get, that's an acre, that you could use for the houses, and it would not be R 1, and would probably help on our taxes, too. And the runoff on this road, and the road is scenario, that I don't want to go do about that, but it's, it's bad. Forty-one cars a day just out of that road from where I live, right along here, come out that road every day, forty-one cars already on that road. It's a dead-end road, but the traffic is enormous on it, and this is going to really put a bunch of traffic, and that's going to throw it back up towards the church if they go that way and all that school up there. So that's the way I look at it, so I'm not in favor of it at all. I'd like to see it go ag estate.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate your comments. Richard Brinker. Had to get my glasses on to look at that.
You did well. Might have something to do with my handwriting.
Nice handwriting.
Yeah. My name is Richard Brinker, and I live with my wife, Annie, at 294 Penn Isle Church Road. And we've been there about 36 years, so we're newcomers. But, except for about six years that we did, did live in town for a bit. We had a lovely home in town, but my, my children said almost on a daily basis, not when, but it, not if, but when, we moved back to the country, and we finally did, and we're so grateful we did. We really love it here. Upon our retirement, many people ask us where we're going to go, and I said, we're already where we want to go, so that's good. Some points I'd like to make. I'm acquainted with several members of the Smith family, and I think well of them, so I don't feel in an adversarial position, I just feel good about them. Change is always very difficult, and change, but change is inevitable, and we get that. The problem here has been that I have very limited firsthand knowledge, a lot of he-said, she-said type thing, and it's not very comforting, we know that's not reliable as well. Naturally, the property owner would wish to maximize the value of their property, and I do understand that. The addition of 14 homes would add an annual demand of approximately 1.7 million gallons of water, and that's based on some information I got from the Plaque Gas Authority, where they said it was about 2,000 gallons per person, per, per month. And of course, that's a very variable number, and so I had to put some, some homes and people and all that sort of thing with it, but somewhere in the order of over a million, nearly 2 million gallons of water. With very little exception, all that groundwater, I mean, well water, will go back into the ground in our sewer system, so we have that to contend with as well. Because our road is relatively narrow with limited access, is often used for walking and some bicycle riding by our children. A number of children walk this road from home to the bus stop and home again on a daily basis. Unfortunately, it does happen that folks do go a little too fast. We all need to recognize the danger involved. However, it is unlikely that it'll get any better as we add additional automobiles. We acknowledge the interest in and desire to develop the property for the inclusion of new homes. We very much request that somewhat larger property size be required for each home. Of course, that would reduce the number of homes built on the section of property, which would logically increase the value of the property, but reduce the number of homes. I'm, we're requesting a minimum of an acre. I do have these requests to make. I request that it be zoned ag estate, ag estate. I request that the minimum property size for each home be increased to at least an acre. Include the need for surface water drainage, which I now understand is part of the, of the deal. I didn't have, I didn't have access to that information. Kind of takes me back to if someone had told me firsthand, I would, I'd know, I'd feel more informed. The, I would suggest a sidewalk, and that that sidewalk actually cross over that earthen bridge that we have.
That would be required.
Beg your pardon?
Sidewalk would be required in the subdivision.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. And we petition the county that, that that bridge would somehow or another be materially improved. It is, as Mr. Cannon pointed out, it is frequently washed out. And I always figured the day was coming, but it hasn't gotten there yet. It has gotten pretty close, but hasn't gotten there yet. And those are somewhat of a summation of my thoughts, and I appreciate the opportunity to share them with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brinker. The next one to speak is Craig Sharar. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Craig Sharar, 147 Pine Tree Road, East Palaca. The reason I'm here to speak before you, especially what you said, Madam Chairman, based upon your analysis, you need to get a big rubber stamp and say, go. If all these things are true, why did they bring up, look at these beautiful houses we're going to build? Look at these beautiful lots we're going to create. Look at all this beautiful stuff we're doing. You know why they do that? They're selling you a bill of goods. They don't want you to approve it because it's legal, they want you to approve it because it looks great. Mr. Swing is right. You say, well, we have a comp plan. Well, the comp plan does not trump Florida statute. It does not trump the Constitution. That needs to be looked at. If he's right and the other individual's wrong, who just spat it off a couple words, you guys shouldn't be approving it. You need to have your legal advisor do research on this and look at this next time, because otherwise, what you're doing is you're just approving something for the sake of approving it. Not only is it about the lot sizes, but you've got water bodies they have to be so far from. You have a road that is a Level D. That's a failure. A failure. So let's put more traffic on there. Nobody has said anything about the fact that that's a Level D road. This is not a rubber stamp, and what needs to happen is you guys have to do an analysis, because this is what happens. They came in, they sold you a bill of goods, because you're pushing the can down the road. Oh, we're only here to approve it. No, you aren't, because once they get approval, then they go to the next step. And what happens at the next step? Oh, the planning board approved it, so we should go ahead and approve it, because they're supposed to look at all these things that you said that you weren't supposed to look at. Then it goes to the third step. Oh, the other two people approved it, so we should just go ahead and approve it. And that's why you end up with a project, which is not what got presented today and sold to you, but it's some other kind of a project. So there needs to be a serious analysis. If he is correct, and they're putting over density in there for that kind of a project, it should not be approved.
Thank you.
And just to sit there and sit there and blow it off like this, especially when you've got a legal advisor there, there should be some kind of analysis to determine that.
Thank you, Mr. Sharar. Mr. Perry, do you have any comment on that?
No, Madam Chair, I do not. Quite frankly, I do believe that Mr. Sharar is a lawyer, and I might ask why he didn't come with Florida law to educate us all about it, but instead, he didn't. But as I've tried, like I think the board has pointed out, or, and also staff, that the task of this board today is the rezoning question, the issue of the rezoning. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, and some of the things that Mr. Sharar's brought up are simply not within the purview of this panel. And, but other than that, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel, could you briefly describe a Level D road designator?
So I'm, just as a disclaimer, I'm not a transportation planner-
I know.
... or a transportation engineer, but a Level D is what's adopted by our comprehensive plan for our level of service for local roads, so it is operating at an acceptable level of service. The, any new development would have to improve that road if the development would impact the roadway in such a way that the level of service would be diminished. So right off the bat, we know that the right-of-way width there, and this is right-of-way, it's a 33-foot right-of-way going all the way to the dirt portion of Penn Isle Church Road, owned by the county, there's a deed recorded for it. So the current right-of-way width is 33 feet. We know that to make up for half of what, so normally, you don't develop a road in a lopsided manner, so the applicant would have to deed over at least 15 feet for right-of-way for this project. So that's commensurate with his impacts on this road. The road is substandard with regard to right-of-way width, so the developer has to give up that land, and Public Works would require that at the Development Review Stage. They would also require any improvement, such as a center-left turn lane or anything else that would be required to maintain the level of service on the road. So that's not an analysis that's normally done at the rezoning stage, that's an analysis that's done at the preliminary plat stage, and the developer cannot proceed, and a final development order will not be granted on the project unless there's a condition or a, we would condition the approval based on that. So we would have to definitively see those improvements on the land prior to the final plating of the property.
Thank you. I appreciate your explaining that. Our last speaker is Mr. Michael Black. Please come forward and give us your name and address, and tell us what you want us to know.
My name's Mike Black. I live at 324 Penn Isle Church Road. I live at the very end of the road. What I'm here to tell you about is the water. The road is kind of a bow. When you come from the church, the minute you come onto our road, it bows. It goes up and it comes down. I'm on the downhill side. So where the road meets the asphalt, right there in front of Mr. Brinker's house- So where the road meets the asphalt, right there in front of Mr. Brinker's house, there's always a problem, because the road is the ditch. There's no ditches on either side, the road is the ditch. So the road, all the water nears onto the road, and as it comes off the road, it hits the dirt, tears it all to pieces. So for several months of this year, you go down the road like this, and then like this, and then back like this, so it's kind of like a wavy road. So I picked up the baton and decided to walk around and ask everybody to help us fix the road. Took up a collection of $1,700 from the people at the other end of the road, starting with Mr. Brinker right on down. And we brought rock in, had somebody level it up, and it's got to be heavy rock, because when the water comes through, it's a current. I mean, it's a hard current. Can't be small rock, it's got to be big rock. We're yet to see what's going to happen when heavy water hits the rocks right now, but it's been doing pretty good. Anyway, I wanted to tell you that the water, when it flows, it's ankle-deep and higher every single time. I've watched it, and when it comes off the rock now, it's going to hit more dirt, so wherever the dirt is, it's going to tear up the road, and this is coming off the road, the asphalt road. So I've always been fighting it, I've been living out there since 1987, so I've been fighting it. My father fought it, now I'm fighting it, and it's just the way it is. I've taken that into my mind, my mindset, and I'm going to do that. I also try to keep the grass cut on the roads on both sides with a tractor. One thing about it, on the Smith's side of the road, somebody many years ago, might have been Mr. Ross, I will not say it was, somebody built a berm, and then they put trees on top of the berm. That was to, I give up. It was, to me, the way I look at it was, it was to cut out a ditch. Nobody could put a ditch there, because those trees were there and that berm was there. Nobody could put a ditch on that side of the road. So, all I'm letting you know is, the road, it's the ditch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I understand what it's like to live where the pavement ends and meets dirt on a sloping road. Mr. James Beach.
Yeah, my name is James Beach, I live on 126 Pine Tree Trail. My property backs up to the side of what property is mentioned. When I first sent a petition, the petition, I signed it prematurely, because I didn't want a lot of stuff happening. I moved to the country to live in the country. I didn't move out to the country to live in the subdivision. After seeing the other side of it, I've kind of changed my mind. But then after hearing y'all, if, we're here to change agriculture to residential. Beyond this step, am I going to have a right to speak? What they're planning to do may not go through on a higher level, is what may be the future. Will I have an opportunity to come back and speak on that?
I believe so, because the, Gabriel, would you take us through the process?
Yes, ma'am. So first is the rezoning process, then the preliminary plat process, which would first be reviewed by the Development Review Committee. The committee would ensure that everything meets the code, and that all of the developer has agreed to all of the requirements, the concurrency requirements for improvements. Then we would send it to the Planning Commission, where there would be another public hearing.
Right, it would come back to us at that point. And that would be just like today's meeting, staff would make a presentation and recommendation, we would question staff, the owner, agent would speak, we would question them, and then anyone from the public who wishes to make a comment based on the new application, which will be the subdivision application, it won't be this. That would be more detailed, based on all, you know, how many houses, all the things that they have to do and must comply with. That's when the public has a chance to speak again. And from that point, it then goes to the Board of County Commissioners. Now, there's two more, two more steps with the Board of County Commissioners. Does it go to B O C C for the subdivision, or does that stop with us?
No, it does, it does go, Madam Chair, to the B O C C for their approval, and then the final plat, which has to conform substantially, so it almost has to be exactly like the preliminary plat. The only changes that are allowed are like a reduction in lots, but never an increase in any sort of intensity, would be done administratively, and that would be signed by the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
So this process will be repeated on November 23rd, before the Board of County Commissioners meeting, that probably would be a 9:05 server?
Yes, for the rezone, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about something.
And then, whenever the subdivision comes back from us, we don't know when, but it'll be months down the road, we would see it, and approximately six months later, our recommendation, would it go to the Board of County Commissioners for their final approval. And then it goes back to administration, if there are any reductions in the actual items that they want to provide on this site.
I just want to, I just want to be clear that I can come back if things change-
Yes, sir.
-and that don't go as they propose it, to a lower level, I want to be able to voice my opinion on that. That's what I need to know.
You will certainly have that opportunity. The public always has a chance to come speak before us. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak, either for or against this particular application? Please come forward and give us your name and address. We'll give you a card to fill out after you speak.
My name is Kelly Hurst, and I live at 260 Pennile Church Road. We have lived there for 53 years, myself, my father lived there for way longer before I did. All the neighbors knows each other, the Thomases, the Hursts, the Cannons, the Brinkers, you name it, everyone knows everyone. The reason that we live there is because it is an agricultural place, and we chose to live in the country. We did not choose to live in a residential, where we'll have up to 14 houses across the street from us. We have cows, horses, goats, chickens, dogs, cats, you name it. I can't understand how building a new subdivision, that's not only going to increase the traffic on our road, will increase the danger for our children that have to walk down to the bus stop, but will also put a damage to the natural wildlife there, like the gopher troopers. We can't move those, you're not supposed to move them. Or how the horses or the cows are going to react to such an increase of people coming up and down that road. The reason that people move to the country is because they want to be in the country, not because they want to live in a residential place. And I think that most of the neighbors, that we've all been there 30-plus years, probably feel the same way. If we wanted to live in residential, we would have already moved, but we have stayed the course and stayed there for decades, and I just don't think anyone would be happy with a subdivision there.
Thank you. Appreciate your coming forward, Kelly. Anyone else? At this time, I'll close the public portion of the meeting.
Can I have a follow-up on any of that stuff?
No, sir, you've already spoken.
I've used my free minutes.
Sir, whisper in his ear what you want him to say. Please give us your name and address, and-
My name's Brett Bennett, I live at 350 Pennile Church Road. My family has lived down there since the very, very early 1900s. We own a lot of property at the end of Pennile Church Road, it's been in my family for all my life. I'm not against progress in Putnam County. Progress in Putnam County is coming like a freight train, we all know that. It's very hard for us to cherry pick the areas that we want that progress in. I agree with several of the other opinions, I'd like to see this ag state. I don't feel like our road is anywhere near the capability to handle what's being proposed. There would have to be a complete overhaul of the road and everything from east Pennile Road on down to make this happen. I would assume the engineer is aware of that, but I just think, I don't really think this is a great idea to do this in this neighborhood, unless it's severely set down to a smaller scale.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Okay, are we ready to close the public portion of the meeting? Sir, do you want to come back? I'll give you a minute.
Me?
Yes.
Okay.
Just come back, state your name and address, and we'll start all over again.
We moved out there 60 yards years ago.
Please give us your name and address.
I'm Charles Smith. Just follow up on that, the road belongs to both sides, we owe Gerald's point that he owned to the center of the road, we owned to the center of the road on the other side. The road meanders all over the place down through there. On his end- We own the whole road on his end. No, okay.
All right, excuse me, just a minute, please address us.
All right, nevermind.
Please, I'm going to hold this down, please address the board only.
All right. But to follow up, we moved out there, there was nobody out there but four families, including us. I don't know how many, you couldn't count them on both hands and toes. So, but it's all on the other side of the road, the opposing side has 40 votes against two, because they are already over there, they've developed their side of the road, okay? And it might not ever get more, any more development, but I guarantee you, it will, because most of that over there is more than one acre. So that, bear that in mind, the road is going to be used, you know? I mean, we can, we need to upgrade the road, but that's already been there. But anyway.
I wish we had a magic wand and a pot of gold, that we could upgrade every road in Putnam County that needs it. But unfortunately, we're very limited in, in what we have. I'm not going to give too many follow-ups now. We're not going to rebut each other, we're just taking information. Do you have something to say that hasn't been said? Do you have something to say that hasn't been said? All right, please give us your name and number, name and address.
Gerald Cannon, 270 Pennile Church Road. The road itself is called a descriptive right-of-way, and for years, they could not pave it, because it was a descriptive right-of-way. That's why it's so narrow. I own from my house, and my brother's next to his house, we own two foot on the other side of the paved road. That is in my deed. And I had no objection to the county paving it, because they maintained it, I've said nothing about it. But every bit of the land that's come on that road, came off of my side, in front of me. So if they want any more land, they're going to have to take it on the other side. Because, you know, I've gave up my land. I've gave up 20-something feet. So, I mean-
Thank you.
That's why it's called a descriptive right-of-way.
Right, you had, you had shared that with us, thank you. Gabriel, do you want to address that now, or do you want to, okay?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This road is, with all due respect, not a prescriptive easement, it is actually county right-of-way. I contacted the Public Works Department previously, and they provided me with the deed and the section map, showing that it is public right-of-way that's owned by the county.
Thank you.
To the point of the dirt, so all of the paved portion.
The paved portion.
Yeah, but I remember he doesn't attach it on there.
You take that up with the property appraiser? Not us.
I have a note out there, it's entirely on my property.
Okay, sir, we understand your concerns, we understand your displeasure with some of this, and we respect very much the opinions that have been shared with us today. I assure you, whichever way we decide to vote, we will do so respecting the things that you have said. And bear in mind, we're step one out of four. County Commission is step two, we get it step three, after D R C chews it up, regurgitates it, and reshapes it, then it comes back to us for step three. And then step four, the final step, is with the Board of County Commissioners. So that's what all's happening today. We're just the, okay, this stands to reason within code, which is our responsibility. We also have the responsibility to look at what is best for Putnam County. And I can't tell you how any of my colleagues up here are going to vote, but I can tell you that we respect you very highly, and we appreciate your taking the time out of a Tuesday, Wednesday afternoon to come sit in a cold room and listen to us and each other, and you have done so very, very, very well. At this point, there being no more public comment, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and bring it back to the board for discussion. Discussion and/or motion and vote. Mr. Dansler, you have your mouth open, so we're going to take-
Yeah, the only thing that I'd like to say is, is I really thought I lived in the country, and where I live is 100-foot lots, and we have cows and everything across the street. And I've really considered that country, but, and that's what we're trying to do here with this. But that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve case number R 21-018.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Dansler, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Mr. Froelich. I do want to continue polling, board members to get their thoughts on this. Mr. Froelich, what are your thoughts?
I think it's, it's a good idea. I think when it comes back, there'll be less houses per acre. I'd say, I'd say be at least one, one and a half per unit, but I'm, that's not my, that's not my call. I would like to see it at least one, but that's not my call, that's up to the next step.
I think we've kind of gotten some bad information today from-
Can we, can we please keep the, keep it down? Go ahead, Erin.
I think we've kind of gotten some bad information, or at least, I don't think that our, we would adopt a comprehensive plan that is in direct conflict with state law. So I think we got some bad information, with all due respect, from you, Ken, on that. I could be proven wrong, and I'll say it if I am, but I think that this is a very reasonable use for this land. I think it's good to increase tax base, and it'll be good for the area. I mean, to have nice homes versus kind of a couple of rundown places with junk all over them, on that side of the road. That dam thing is quite interesting, so I would be interested to see how that ends up getting handled by the D R C and the Public Works and all that, but I don't think we're going to do anything against state law by voting on this today, so.
Mr. DeSantis.
Maybe that was my mic, not yours.
You're the culprit.
See?
Here, use mine.
I've got it.
You got it?
Can they hear me? Yes, okay. You know, the packet that we have received, where it reduced the one acre to the three-quarter acres, I think that got everybody excited. Our ag zoning requires you could have one unit on an acre agriculture. By reducing that, it makes everybody think we're going to jam-pack homes on a residential lot. I would like to see this no less than an acre, and I don't think it's going to come back at three-quarters of an acre, it's probably going to be less than an acre, more than an acre per lot. But what we're doing here is strictly not designing a new development, we're just changing the land use plan to say it is allowed to put a development out there. That is going to be subject to the residents' approval, which you'll have more than two more chances to speak in favor or against. But I think the county has to develop, and what we're doing here is not going to change the development one way or another. People complain about a dirt road. If that road were to get paved tomorrow, I would bet that half the people would be objecting to it, whether it be the county's road, private road, I really don't care. But what we're doing here was within our rights, and I think our duty, to go ahead and try to see this county progress a little bit, and go ahead and approve this application, it does no harm, as I see it.
Thank you. Mr. Schwing.
I believe I've made my point. We have a parcel of land. We want to make it a subdivision, but we're not voting to make it a subdivision. We're only voting to change it to R 1A.
R 1.
R 1, all right, R 1. Under our comp plan, I do believe our minimum lot size is one acre for ag.
For ag zoning.
Ag zoning, yes.
So it's impossible to get two for one acre.
Under current zoning, that's correct.
And under future zoning is correct also.
No.
We do have 14 acres, and we have 14 lots, right?
Right.
I mean, some of them are going to be a little bigger, I assume, or the-
Well, you still got retention pond. Your retention pond is probably two acres, two and a half acres, maybe.
Yeah, that's all going to have to work out, and, and when that comes down, and all the analysis is done, and the, the parcel sizes are going to have to be adjusted to accommodate the houses that they're going to put on them, and accommodate the water septic and all of those things- to accommodate the houses that they're gonna put on them and accommodate the, the water septic and all of those things, those lot sizes are very likely going to change, and the, the density is very likely going to decrease.
Well.
But that's not today.
I've argued for increasing density from day one. Okay, so. My knowledge or my thought of my knowledge, since everybody seems to think I don't know what I'm talking about. You need, as of the, today, you needed one acre in ag zoning to put a septic tank. As of today. Because I did check it, today. And I don't think I have to disclose that because I checked it for some of my personal property.
That's fine. That's not a conflict of interest. We're ex parte.
So, when I tell you that it takes one acre, that's per the boys right next door. Today, not a year ago. It was the same a year ago as it is today. They had, state hasn't changed that law.
But we're going to R-1, though.
But we're going to R-1.
R-1, the problem you have, the, that, the state doesn't care if you wanna zone it X, Y, Z. You can't have a septic tank unless you have an acre, unless it is a grandfather-in-law lot that was subdivided a long time ago. I forget what, what's the year?
I, I'm not sure, Madam Chair, I'm not sure what the-
We have a lot of subdivisions that were, that were plotted.
Certainly.
Let's say in nineteen sixty?
Nineteen ninety-two, I think, was the, uh-
Ninety-one was the comp plan adoption, but with regard to environmental health, I don't know how, what the answer to that is. The environmental health-
Again, that goes before DRC.
Correct, and environmental health at the time of DRC would then say, "We're not approving this unless you have an acre", if that is the, correct. My understanding that is that it is half acre, but I'm not an expert on environmental health regulations. Um, I may be wrong, but at the time of DRC, they would be the ones to object and state that they wouldn't issue the approval.
Now, the one thing we can do in our recommendation is we can say, under the findings and recommendations that have been presented to us from staff, we can say the maximum number, maximum number of residential lots allowed for the development shall not exceed X number. We can state that in our approval. Can we not, Wendy? Can?
Actually, that's part of our conditions that we're recommending that you put in there.
Right, so we can recommend that that condition be more strident and lower that number from fifteen to another number, if that's something the board feels needs to be done. That's the only thing we can do as, as related to lot size, because that is in the recommendation that will go forth through the County Commission. So, does the board have a pleasure to reduce that number of maximum lots for this subdivision, uh, from this standpoint?
Personally, I think that we need to let the Development Review Committee look at what it's gonna take to properly drain that, you know, retention, and what it's gonna take for additional road. Um, and then they can, I mean, they'll determine what, we have set parameters that it's no less than three-quarters of an acre, no more than fifteen lots, and no mobiles and no modulars, so just site-built homes. I think those are, that's my opinion. I think those are, um-
Okay, anybody else want to address the possibility of changing the recommendation?
No, I agree with Erin.
Joel?
I agree with Erin, too. I think it's a moot point of whether we're at fifteen lots or fourteen lots at this point. It's too early in the game to, to, to determine. I personally think there's probably gonna be, you know, the, the reason they're trying to go three-quarters per acre because they've got, they're gonna have to put ponds and they're gonna have to give up some of that right-of-way like he was talking about. So they're trying to get as many as they can. They're not ever gonna get fifteen lots in there, but they're, they're, they're shooting for the stars. But by the time they give all of that up, um, they're, it's, they're, they're just saying a three-quarter minimum is what they're saying.
Okay. Um, Mr. DeSantis? You fine? Okay, uh, at this point, we will bring this to a vote, and we will do a roll-call vote. I'll start on my left. Mr. DeSantis?
Yes.
You're right. Am I right, Mr. Schwing? Hello?
Madam Chair, if I may, for the purposes of clarification of the motion, Commissioner Dantzler, were you intending on moving to approve with the conditions or simply approval?
I was, I was, uh, my move was to approve it, prove it as presented.
Okay.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Yes. Ken?
You're saying staff recommendation is what?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
I'll vote yes, because I think we're gonna change it.
Okay, Erin?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
And Joel?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And I will tell you, we do appreciate your having come forth and talked to us, and we understand. I spent quite a bit of time today being another person driving down your road, uh, making a close look at everything. And I think that, um, you do have a little piece of heaven out there. But I know I can go to, go to Santa Claus and ask for a Ferrari or a Lamborghini, and he might give me a used Mini Cooper. And so, we don't know what's gonna happen at the next stage of this. We look forward to it. And, uh, if it does come back before us, we look forward to seeing you again, too. So thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to R-21-19, Ms. Hickey. You all are more than happy to stay, we're more than happy to have you stay, but we understand that dinner hour is approaching, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Maybe you'll need to stay in.
They're not gonna stay with me. Ah, thank you so much, sir.
This is gonna come down to at least one. Well, you're right.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate ya. All right.
Madam Chair?
Wendy?
Okay, this application is from Putnam Land Partners, the King's Family LLC.
Could you speak a little closer into the mic while we've got people leaving the room? And you, could you all leave quietly, 'cause we're gonna move on with the, the meeting?
This mic is dangerous. It talks back.
It's Jerry Turner's mic.
It's all right, I got blame for it, don't worry about it.
Turn it off, Ken. Turn it off, boys.
This application is from Putnam Land Partners LLC, King Family LLC. Freddie, you're, I can't, I don't know how to say that last name, I'm so sorry. And Alexandra, Alexandra Velez. Um, the agent is Sean Wilson from Putnam Land Partners LLC. The request is a zoning map amendment for ten parcels containing four hundred and thirty-five point three-seven acres from planned unit development to agriculture. The property is located on the north side of Georgetown Shortcut Road in Crescent City. The property is designated agricultural two and rural residential on the future land use map. The property is undeveloped and it has approximately three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage on Georgetown Shortcut Road. The four hundred and thirty-five point three-seven acres included in this request is from a portion of the expired Live Oak Golf, Golf Club Estates Planned Unit Development adopted by ordinance ninety-nine dash twenty on October twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-nine. Phase one of this PUD was built and contains a utility area, golf course, and the Live Oak Golf and Country Club Estates, single-family platted subdivision, all of which will remain under the control of the Live Oak Golf Club Estates PUD. This is an aerial of the property. This is the future land use. As you can see, the, um, the rural residential are those little tiny pieces in the corner. And we'll be touching on that, uh, as we go through. The current zoning is PUD. This is the wetlands map, shows a substantial amount of wetlands. The FEMA flood map shows flood hazard area. The agricultural two fut- uh, agricultural two category on the future land use map consists of areas used of silviculture, range land, and other agricultural uses, vacant lands and residential parcels of which exceed the density allowed in this future land use category. It is intended that a large share of this land will remain in active agricultural production in the future. The types of land use is allowed in this future land use category are agricultural uses are permitted, intensive agriculture uses are permitted, shall be further regulated by standards provided in the Land Development Code. Residential development shall be allowed at a density of one dwelling per twenty acres. An increase in density is allowed up to a maximum one dwelling unit per ten acres, subject to a density determination made according to the point-score methodology. The rural residential category on the future land use map consists of areas located adjacent to municipalities and areas designated urban service and urban reserve and rural center. Areas interspersed with the active agricultural areas and areas around water bodies. The portion of this property that is shown to be the rural residential future land use category as shown on the future land use map is not clearly delineated and does not have any identifiable parameters. Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Policy A-193-B1 allows for boundary adjustments to the land use designations on the future land use map. The lands which form part of this request that are shown to contain the rural residential future land use designation primarily consist of lands that contain wetlands and extensive hundred-year floodplain areas or are entirely submerged. The subject parcels were in existence prior to December nineteenth, nineteen ninety-one, and the rural residential designation does not obviously correspond to a major roadway, right-of-way canal, water body, section line, or any known boundary. So the existing zoning is, the property is presently zoned PUD, and the purpose of a PUD is to provide a method for landowners or developers to submit unique proposals which may not be provided or for, allow, or allowed in other zoning districts, otherwise established by the code. The PUD zoning district allows a mix of residential, non-residential uses and unique design features which might not otherwise be allowed in one or other listed districts, but otherwise conform to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed zoning is primarily is, use is to implement the agricultural one and agricultural two land use classifications as shown, as shown on the Putnam County Future Land Use Map. The uses allowed are residential, single-family, mobile home, and agricultural general. The agricultural two future land use allows residential development agricultural uses, and the agricultural zoning allows for residential and agricultural general uses. The rezoning of this property is considered less intense, intensive, which would result in a fewer average daily roadway trips than the previously adopted PUD was anticipated to cause. The Georgetown Shortcut Road has an adopted LOS of D and operates acceptably. The surrounding land uses are single-family residential, including mobile home, a mobile home park, and phase one of the Live Oak Golf and Country Club Estates and agricultural. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning to agriculture is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, consistent with the locational requirements for the agricultural zoning compatible with the surrounding land use, land uses. Staff recommends approval of the request amending the zoning map from PUD to agricultural for the subject property.
Any questions of staff?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
There again, it doesn't have a page. Exhibit B.
The individual parcels.
The individual parcels. We, basically, what we, what they did was, these partners or whatever it was called, they bought this room, they sold that to themselves, they sold this to the King Family, and they sold that over there to somebody else. But they've got a, it says here what they wanna do. I think we need to make it part of our recommendation, this little point-one-five acre piece, wherever they wanna put it with one of these other ones, that we need to do that, so it's done. We don't need to make an ag zoning for a point-one-five acre, which definitely is non-conforming.
What, what happened was, all of these currently have the PUD zoning, which does not allow any development right now. So when they started, um, breaking off parts and pieces, there was no develop, there were no entitlements associated with those pieces. So after this, after this process, basically bringing the PUD back to its original zoning, the portion of the PUD that has expired, which expired, um, good fif- close to fifteen years ago, to bring it back to the agricultural zoning, they are now gonna come in and do a type-two subdivision for the large acre parcels, so that this way they're gonna combine them fixed, it's gonna be fixed to bring it back, so it's conforming to the current code.
In other words, we're creating another subdivision of this?
A type-two, which has a minimum, has the large acreage, um, parcels.
Well, if, if my research was correct, the smallest piece is a ten-acre tract. Then I think there's maybe one that twelve, twelve or fifteen acres. There was another smaller one. But the rest of them was, you know, like a hundred eighty-five, you know? But whatever we're gonna do with this point-one-five, we need to do that before, they need to combine that.
They can, they can combine it because, um, I believe the owner of that parcel is also Putnam Partners, if I'm remembering correctly. I don't have this.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, they would be able to do the, um, uh, unity of title for that piece, and that would correct that problem right off the bat.
That was the only one that was under ten acres, I think. Is that correct, sir? So that would correct that, and then I'd really have no heartburn over any of it, then.
But we're not approving that particular map at this point. We're just approving the zoning.
No, basically, what we're doing is taking the PUD back to its agricult- not the entire PUD, but that portion of the PUD, getting rid of that PUD zoning and going into the agricultural zoning.
The phase-two, okay.
I do have a general question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm looking at the future land use and then what you said about there's no specific boundary for the transition from rural residential to agricultural.
Right.
Um, so all of that, we're just gonna say is in agricultural future land use. Is that what we're saying, kind of?
Madam Chair, if I may address that. The Comprehensive Plan has a provision in it where the, uh, there can be an administrative adjustment to a certain extent. So we are evaluating that, and a lot of the areas that have the rural residential are submerged lands or wetlands. So while the Comprehensive Plan does not foresee the rural residential having agriculture zoning, so, I should say, a rezoning to agricultural, agricultural in rural residential land use, um, we are working on correcting that because we could not find any defined boundary that may have existed historically or now. There were no section lines that it was concurrent with, there were no, uh, former property lines. It was really arbitrarily drawn, and so it is our opinion that that was an error in the map. Um, and if not an error, then an unenforceable line, because there's no way to, um, there would be no way to define a legal description of that.
I was gonna ask you what the legal descriptions are for these parcels.
So the, the legal descriptions for the parcels, we have, but the, we wouldn't have any kind of, um, way to determine on the ground where that line actually is, because it's not concurrent with any kind of actual line that can be surveyed. Right.
So that was my question. Basically, I know that rural residential, you can't do a rezone to agricultural in that. Um, so we're just gonna say that, okay. I, I, I know what you're talking about.
Yes.
And this is another case that will come back before us as a subdivision?
Uh, this will not. This is a type-two subdivision, so it's a large-lot subdivision that's handled administratively. And the lines on that exhibit B, I wouldn't pay much attention to those lines. Those are the existing lines. That's not what the type-two subdivision would look like, or what it would even be permitted to look like.
Yeah. All righty. Any other questions of staff?
I just have one quick question. Does the type-two residential, does that have to pave roads?
No, sir. No, they can front on existing county roads. They do have to do some drainage improvements if the Public Works Department determines that those improvements have to be made in order to keep our level of service for drainage.
They can, they can make it on a dirt road, too. Or, or it's all, it's all fronted on a paved road?
It would have to be fronted on a paved road. Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, well, is the owner or the owner's agent present? Would you like to speak to us? Please come forward. Give us your name and address and, of course-
Hello, I'm Mark Jones. I'm the owner of the property at 221 Georgetown Shortcut Road, and I appreciate you guys considering-
Wait a minute, are you the owner or the owner's agent?
I'm the owner.
You're the owner, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Um, I'm the owner, and, uh, we appreciate you guys looking at, uh, our rezoning request tonight, and I think the planning department did an excellent job pulling this together and articulating our desire, why we wanna get this rezoned, because of the abandoned PUD, so we can proceed with development. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the owner applicant?
I have a question, since we're not doing what this says. Since we're not doing what this says, we're just, we're just going to make everything ag for you, and then you're going to get with staff and plat it out.
Yes, sir.
Correct. That's, they'll go for a class, class two subdivision.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. It would not be platted, though, just to correct that. It would be.
Right. It's not platted as a subdivision.
Correct. It's a type two subdivision.
Okay. With far less stringent requirements.
Right.
No requirements.
Well, there.
I like one of them.
Gabriel has a lot of requirements for us.
Believe me, they will come up with some, I'm sure, Tim.
Yeah, I want to do one of those.
Well, now, we come up with a lot for you.
I know that. We'd have no problem doing that all the time.
Okay. Any other questions of the owner? Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you.
He doesn't have to fill that out. He's the owner. We'll take that. Anyone from the, anyone from the public would like to speak either for or against this case? Mr. Sharar, come on back up and yell at me again.
I'm going to be quieter this time.
It won't be like having you up here. Please state your name and address.
147 Pine Tree Road, East Palaca. I'm not going to speak against this because I've never spoken against something that's taking us back to what we really should be. But I would like to point this out. I've been dealing with land use issues for about 30 years, and what is happening with this is exactly what my biggest gripe is about the planning process in other places and especially here. People have this idea that if you take out a pen and change the color on the map, that houses and growth and development will pop up overnight and Putnam County will become the most populous per capita county in the entire state of Florida.
Heaven forbid.
Well, yeah, well, I've got a 200-unit PUD out by my house underneath the power lines in East Palaca that I've got to deal with. It should have never been approved when it got done, but Mariposa, we all remember Mariposa, right? They were going to build a 10,000 population town in the middle of Cracker Swamp.
Yes, we know that.
And where are is it?
It's not coming.
Is it, excuse me?
It's not coming.
No, but you know what? You would have been, if you had said that sitting in that chair back then, they would have figured out some way to get rid of you.
They're proggers.
Because I think, was it Terry Turner sitting in the chair at that time?
It could have been.
Okay. Oh, we've got to do this because we, growth is inevitable. Well, this project didn't go anywhere, and now we're fixing it. Interlock and Lakes Estates.
Okay. I'll let you bring it to an end now.
Well, the point is this. I was here one day and you guys were doing a comp plan, and it was something that you guys put up there, and I just said, you know what? I'm not going to say anything. It was wrong 20 years ago when y'all put it in the comp plan. You re-put it back in the comp plan, had nothing to do with reality. And, you know, y'all are the gatekeepers. And this isn't unique to y'all. I've seen this all other places, but y'all are the gatekeepers. But it's like, someone comes in, we're going to do a PUD, we're going to have all these houses, we're going to do all this, we're going to, fantasy, 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 and it gets approved. And I would just ask in the future, remember this. The next time somebody comes in here, and I'm not talking about the little projects that, you know, the 14 house projects was the prior project, which I don't actually have a problem with, I had a problem with the process. And that's what I have with this. I don't have a problem with this. This is great. But it's the process. And when something comes in here, instead of just going, oh, yeah, change the color on the map, and I'll wrap it up. One last thing. Remember the rural centers?
Very well.
Okay. Have you ever seen what the boundary is on a rural center? It's a circle. You know why it's a circle? Because some guy put his coffee cup on a map and drew a circle, which is why people have two types of zonings on their property, in the rural centers. So, once again, when this stuff comes up here, and I know you're going to say, you look at it, and some of the stuff you look at, but you know what? The bigger the dream, the easier it is to approve. And those are the ones that you really shouldn't, because what they're going to end up doing down there, Bass World and that group, and maybe this is part of it, they're going to accomplish that here, but all those stupid chopped up lots down there in Whispering Pines, Georgetown Cove, because someone that was sitting in those chairs said, oh, yeah, draw my lands on a map, and threw it over. And we just really need to watch that.
1991, a lot of things got drawn and there were too many crayons handed out. But we appreciate your comments, Mr. Sharar.
And I appreciate you listening.
Appreciate your being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak either for or against this particular application? At that point, I'll close the public portion of this meeting and bring it back to the board for discussion. I'll start on my right this time, Mr. Schwing.
I have no objections.
Mr. DeSantis.
No objections.
Ms. Fortner?
Nope.
Mr. Frolik?
No objections.
Mr. Dansler?
No objections.
In that case, I would call for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
It's R. 2119.
R. 21019, rezoning application from PUD to agricultural, as it is consistent with our.
Goals, objectives.
Goals, objectives, and policies.
Okay. Ms. Fortner has made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Frolik has made the second. Okay. Have a proper motion and a proper second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All opposed? Thank you very much for being here, sir. This next goes to the County Commission on November 23rd. All righty. We are now moving into TA, which is a text amendment, 21002, and it's to actually make an addition to the Comprehensive Plan that we have previously sent to the board. This is something that's come back from the state. So, we'll turn it over to Mr. Quintez and let him take it from here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To provide some background on this, a recently passed addition to the Community Planning Act is requiring a, an additional element to be added to the Comprehensive Plan. And I'll read what the Florida statutes now says, "In accordance with the legislative intent expressed in statutes 163.3161 subsection 10," and the other on there, "that governmental entities respect judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights. Each local government shall include in its Comprehensive Plan a property rights element to ensure that property, private property rights are considered in local decision-making. A local government may adopt its own property element, property rights element, or use the following statement of rights." I'll go through the statement of rights. One, the right of a property owner to physically possess and control his or her interests in the property, including easements, leases, or mineral rights. Two, the right of a property owner to use, maintain, develop, and improve his or her property for personal use or for the use of any other person, subject to state law and local ordinances. Three, the right of the property owner to privacy and to exclude others from the property to protect the owner's possessions and property. And four, the right of a property owner to dispose of his or her property through sale or gift. And this is, so, the next slide up there is the directives from the state on when the proposed plan amendment had to be initiated by. Basically, we have, we don't have a whole lot of time. We have to send this together with any future, either coupled with any future land use amendment or prior to another land use amendment being sent to the state. The recommendation is that staff, is that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to transmit the proposed amendment to the Department of Economic Opportunity for expedited review. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Dansler?
None.
Mr. Frolik?
None.
Ms. Fortner?
Nope.
Mr. DeSantis?
No.
Mr. Schwing?
I'm ready.
I have a question. How does this impact eminent domain?
So, this really doesn't change any existing constitutional interpretations. This is really a reiteration of what's already guaranteed in state law. So, it would really not, it wouldn't change anything regarding eminent domain.
And this will go to the County Commission with the revisions to the comp plan?
No, ma'am. This will go after the revisions to the comp plan. Right now, we're trying to get those, the final adoption set for the second, or, yes, the fourth Tuesday of the month, which is, no, in October.
October.
We're trying to, at least. We're trying to meet that goal. We have to have some maps revised by the, by the consultant, because they contain, they have the shape files for those maps, so we were unable to revise them ourselves. But we're hoping to send that down to them on September 26th, I believe, for the final adoption with the revisions, sorry, October 26th. Thank you.
We already passed that.
Say, how do we do that?
With the revisions.
Okay.
The slight revisions that are just addressing DEO's comments, but this is going to be sent to them afterwards.
So, this is not part of DEO's comments on the comp plan?
No, ma'am. No, this is actually in response to a recently enacted state statute.
Okay. I thought this was something that we had to, to include in the comp plan.
So, initially, we thought we could include it in the comp plan for initial, for the final revisions, but we were advised by DEO that it had to go separately.
Okay.
To the local planning agency and the BACC.
Okay.
My only question is, if it's already, if it's already part of the code, why do they have to reiterate it?
That's our question, too.
Okay.
I guess we have to ratify what the state did. That's kind of backwards, but.
I, I think that private property rights were a big deal to our governor, and he wanted to make sure those were in, or just reiterate those and everything, so, and I wholeheartedly agree.
Okay. All right. Ready for the vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. The only thing we have left that I know of on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September meeting. Do I have a motion there? Mr. DeSantis has moved that we approve the minutes from the September meeting. I have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Frolik has seconded. Any questions, any concerns, any heartburn? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Are there any other items of new business or old business that need to come before this board today? I know this has been a little bit longer meeting than we've had in the past, but we got away with a couple of easy ones, so today was a good meeting. I appreciate everything and everybody for what you've brought to this board and what you've brought to this today. And, Mr. Quintez, did you have something else to tell us?
No, ma'am. I just wanted to respond to your question. There is no, are no other items for today.
That's a good thing. That's a very good thing. Now, you will be getting your packet hopefully for November at least 10 days ahead of the meeting. Is that possible?
We're trying to get it out sooner than we normally would because that packet is going to have a number of items on it. So, we can, I can guarantee you'll get it at least a few days before, but I'm not sure how many days.
All right. What you all need to do when you get it is carefully review the items that are coming before us next month. This will not be a short meeting, so eat your Wheaties before you come.
How many things we got?
It's not so much how many, but it's how much. So, we will convene our November meeting on time, and we will see it through to fruition. And if necessary, we will take a break for provisions. But hopefully, we can go through it fairly easily, but come prepared. It might be a lengthy meeting. Am I correct, Mr. Quintez, without divulging anything?
Yes, Madam Chair. It may be, as would any, if suddenly many people show up and want to speak, so.
That's right. It could be one of those. So, I thank you all very much. I hope you go forth and have a good month. And I'm going on vacation tomorrow, and I'm ready. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. 5:42.